Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, would you perform the roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Youngblood?
Youngblood, right? Here.
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Nysley?
Here.
Councilmember Ring?
Here.
Mayor Nysley. I mean Mayor Cartwright.
He just got promoted. Here. All right. Next, we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Council will typically adopt the agenda in the order listed or modify the order in the way that can best accommodate people in attendance who wish to speak on agenda items. Speakers are requested to restrict their comments to the item as it appears on the agenda and stay within the three-minute time limit. The mayor has the discretion of limiting the total discussion time for an item. Comments? Okay. Motion for adoption?
I move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Carol?
Councilmember Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Yes.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Cartwright?
Aye. Next, we'll move to recognitions and proclamations, of which I'm unaware of any. Sean, I'll double check with you. Okay. Then we'll move to matters of interest to council members. Council, anything? No? I have a matter I'd like to address. And I've written my comments, for the sake of brevity, from which I read. A few weeks ago, I had the displeasure of reading an article in our local paper titled, "Town of Loomis Ignoring Development Impacts." Short story short, the article concludes it's unfortunate that the town of Loomis was bought out of the game with a $90,000 carat from the developers. This characterization is the opposite of the truth. The truth is, in closed session, this council discussed at length the impacts affecting Loomis. We had the benefit of our town manager's input, along with our town planning director, and our legal team of attorneys who specialize in this area of law. Working in concert, we all applied the facts to the applicable laws. We went over the limitations of those statutes. We discussed the rulings of other cases with similar fact patterns. And we considered the cost of pursuing litigation and appeals. It's worth noting, this council includes both genders with white and blue collar occupations from the public and private sectors. Even with our variety of backgrounds and experiences, this council, after considerable deliberation, came to a unanimous conclusion as to the actions to pursue. So in closing, because the premise and the conclusion of this article are the antitheses of truth, I will close with a quote from our 16th president. Abraham Lincoln once said, "You cannot believe everything you read on the internet," and, in this case, our local paper. Next, we'll move to our...
I did have another thing. Sorry.
Jenny?
I didn't mean to do that.
Go ahead.
But I forgot. The Lions Club is having a fentanyl workshop on next Monday night at the Blue Goose. And so if anybody's interested on that, I think it's something that's super important to our community. And I just forgot to mention that.
Oh, it's a problem. All right. Now we'll move to Town Manager's Report. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remembered my glasses this time, so I can read without having to use my phone.
Good job.
Just a couple of quick things. On Costco, I'm sure folks have seen that Costco's taking the trees down. They're grinding stumps right now. They should be able to start grading the site once weather kind of settles down and it's not quite so mucky and muddy out there. So they are continuing to move forward with that. That's the major thing I wanted to talk about. Town Manager Tuesday will be this March 28, 9:00 to 10:30 a.m. here at the Loomis Train Depot. Those meetings are informal, no agenda. They're just meant as an opportunity for community members to discuss town issues directly with me here at the depot. And then there's two staff anniversaries I wanted to call out. Library Director Sarah Comstock and Librarian Deborah Crosby, both been here four years. Started on March 1, 2019, when we actually turned the library into a town department. Last thing I wanted to talk about is that our Finance Director and Treasurer Roger Carroll is going to provide an update on the town's investments at tonight's meeting. Not specifically each investment, but considering the bank failures that have happened this past week, I thought that'd be a good idea for Roger to just kind of give a real quick update to ease people's minds if they were concerned. So I'm going to turn it over to him for that.
So you can imagine that whenever I hear on the news, "bank failure," it perks up my ears. And my first thought is always, is it one of ours? Because we have $5.1 million invested in certificates of deposit in 22 different banks, which keeps us under the $250,000 FDIC insurance limit. So those are never really an issue. But it's always interesting to look, because last time we had the financial crisis, we actually had CDs with three banks that failed. The FDIC paid off those within 10 days. So they do their job, we do ours, they safeguard our money, so those are safe. We also have corporate investments in five financial institutions. Those are not FDIC insured. They're each $250,000. Bank of New York, Bank of America, JP Morgan Chase, what's Charles Schwab, and a bank called Truist Bank. Now, you have to understand, and I try to be brief, but I love talking about this. So the reason those banks failed was because they were highly leveraged, which means they took all those cash deposits, borrowed against them, and bought securities. So they had no cash. They were really cash poor. Suddenly, everybody realized that they didn't have any money. And 95% of their depositors had deposits greater than $250,000. And so they had money that was at risk. So that was the reason for the run on the banks. The banks that we're with, so SVB has about $500 billion of deposits. JP Morgan has over $3 trillion of deposits. And less than 5% of those are deposits greater than $250,000. So you can see the difference. The one that caused me a little concern was Charles Schwab. People want to say Les Schwab. That's the entire place. Charles Schwab, because they have investments, they have a lot of inventory of securities. So I reached out to different brokers that I deal with and an asset management company that actually manages two large portfolios that I'm the treasurer for. And so I said, "Hey, what do you think about Charles Schwab?" And they said, "Not an issue. This is not the same type of thing. They're sure they have a bank." But those banks really set themselves up for failure. The government stepped in to make sure the cash flow was available to those who were damaged. And so the issue is really, it's not unimportant, but it should pass quickly. If you look at the bond market today, which you probably didn't, they're already quickly recovering from the damage from banks losses. So you can rest assured that our money is safely invested. When I look at investments, I always look at this asset management company and say, "Hey, are they buying this too?" And if they are, I know it's a pretty good bet. So I look at my three brokers to make sure that things are good. Everything is highly rated and insured wherever possible. All right. Any questions?
I do, actually. I have one, Roger. You're going to be the expert on this. There was a time when banks were required to hold 10% of cash reserves to cover their deposits because your deposit to the bank is actually their liability, because it's upon demand. Now, was it back in the 2008 financial crisis that that requirement was lowered to 2%?
I don't know.
Or sometimes subsequent?
I don't know the answer to that, but I did look at the balance sheets to each of those five institutions we have. And they have more than 5% in cash reserves. They're between 8% and 12%. So they're all very well cash-balanced.
Okay. And then one more question. It's about the FDIC insurance. And you stated that they had paid, of the three banks that failed, for those accounts that were under 250, or 250 and under, that they paid within 10 days. This could just be an internet rumor that I came across. So have you come across where, in their insurance policy, that they have up to 30 years to make whole? Or is that one of those wild internet rumors?
I have never heard that. But would they dare? I mean, I guess, you know, if all the banks start failing, you know, they'll have to fall back on something like that. But like I said, 5 to 10 days was the most it took before. I'll look that up and let you know what I find.
All right. Well, thank you, Roger. Appreciate it. Sean, did you have anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to the Loomis Library and Community Center Librarians' Report.
Good evening. So I just have some quick dates for you for our calendar this month. It's pretty much the same as it was last month, actually, but everything's good. We've got our AARP Tax Aid that will be through April 12. Once again, that's free tax preparation, no age requirement, no income requirement. They're at the library every Tuesday and Wednesday through April 12, like I said, Tax Day. You do have to call to make an appointment. But if you want to call the library, we can give you that phone number. And then you can call and make an appointment, but appointments do fill up quickly. So if you are still looking to get your taxes done, I'd recommend doing it sooner rather than later. We have our Japanese Storytime, Wednesdays at 10:30. Our regular Storytime, Fridays at 10:30. Our Lego Club, we had our first Lego Club this month, I guess. It was just a couple of weeks ago. It was very successful. The kids had so much fun, as we knew they would. And so we are, once again, going to have it on March 18 at 10:30. Last time, they built a zip line and had to challenge themselves to build something that would last on the zip line all the way across the room. This time, they'll be building bridges. And we've actually also opened up the age range. Before, we were saying 6 and up. And we've opened it up to all ages, because there were some littler kids. We figure they can come and build a bridge if they want to, too. There's no reason why they couldn't come. So we have our Read to a Dog on March 25 at 10:30. Our Manga Club is meeting twice a month, on both the second and fourth Saturdays. So this month, it'll be, well, they've already met for the first time this month, but their next meeting will be March 25, and then they'll meet again on April 8. That's at 1:00. Spice Club this month is going to be on March 28 at 6:00 p.m. And this month, they're doing Ukrainian Rye. So it's not a spice, a little unusual, but we're looking at ancient grains, and Ukrainian rye is one of them. And then on April 8 at 10:30, our UC Master Gardeners will be at the library talking about firescaping and fireproofing your yard and landscape. And then on April 13, I will be doing our monthly digital library information class about how to use our eBooks for seniors. And that's all I have for you this month. Any questions?
No.
All right.
David has a question.
Yeah.
Just partly for my sake, and more question for everybody else here. But am I correct in hearing that they extended the tax due date for our county till October? That's what I heard, because we were in an emergency county?
California has extended the tax date. I don't know if Placer County is in it or if we're not, and I don't know what the date is. But I know that it has been extended. I'll look it up and come back, get back to you in a little bit.
Along those lines, is there any plans to maybe extend the tax? Just have them available if people call? It's a long time to be available, I understand.
Yeah. I would have to check with them. Like I said, they're an outside organization. They're run through AARP. They just use our space, and we help promote it, because we think it's a great service. But I could definitely check with them and see what their plans are for that and let you know.
Because if the due date is, I think there's going to be a lot of people who think it's April, and they're going to come, there's going to be a big rush then.
Yes.
And then nobody's going to do anything until maybe October. And so it might be a good idea, maybe around that time, to have it again.
I will check with them.
Thank you.
So Placer is included in the extension. And it's extended to... October 16. But I don't know if the feds extend it. So you could end up doing federal return, get that done, and then do California.
What I had heard was federal was extended, and I wasn't sure about state.
Okay.
But you're saying the state is now?
The state is. The state is. Let me, I'll see if I can figure out the other one. Oh, wait, IRS, January 24. Hang on, I'm finding it real quick. October 16.
All right.
For feds.
Excellent.
Thank you.
And next, we'll move to the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update. Shinsho? Okay.
I did want to say that, I wanted to say congratulations to Sean for Business Person of the Year. I really feel like I've worked with you for a long time with the businesses, and especially during COVID. And you have always been there and available, and I appreciate that. So congratulations.
Congratulations to you.
Wow. Yes, I was going to mention that. What was the exact title of your award?
Most natively native? Most neighbor? I don't know.
Most neighborly native?
Something like that.
Okay. How about the best neighbor in the world?
Yeah, I like that.
I like that one, yeah.
You're a really good neighbor.
So congratulations to you, Jenny.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll have public comment for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience and on Zoom who wish to address the town council on subjects that are not on the agenda. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on non-agenda items. The council may refer your concerns raised during public comment to staff or place on future agendas. Please note that the audience will be allotted time to make public comment on any item on the agenda at the time that it is heard. Sean, would you check Zoom?
Yeah, we got a couple people. Jean, I saw your hand raised, and then I went down. So I'm going to make you able to talk, and then... Oh, that's Darcy. I don't know. Hang on, sorry. Okay, let's see. Okay, Jean, go ahead.
There, there. You can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. An article in the B on that IRS extension said that it also applied to those who make estimated quarterly tax payments, which would be, you know, small businesses or that kind of thing, independent kind of people. Anyway, to know that you don't have to make that payment in April is a good thing, unless you want to get it out of the way. The other quick comment was, I appreciate what Danny had to report about all that went into weighing the College Park and what was done with that, because other people may have wondered. And I don't have that in front of me at the moment, but I believe it was a letter to the editor, I think, from Roger Smith, and not an editorial written by the paper, just to clarify. Because just like you take, at this meeting, you take all kinds of comments. The paper probably receives various kinds of opinions. And it's good for all of us when we read one of those letters to the editor, whatever it's saying, to weigh it. But thank you, Danny. That was helpful.
You're welcome. Any more, Sean?
Dave, you can go ahead.
Good evening, Town Council. This is Dave Dally at 3815 Delmar Avenue. I call to speak about the paper ad that you referred to, Danny. So is everything inside this ad false? Or what is correct in this ad? And what isn't, for one? I know you're upset with the... Carrot phrase that they use. But are we allowing this with no impact review? That's number one. Number two is, after the last town council meeting, I sent you all an email about the Planning Commission nominees. David Ring brought up something at the last meeting. And I know that every town or city, this is the way that it is. But a lot of things have changed over the years. And being able to allow your friends on the Planning Commission to further your agenda or somebody else's agenda without the process that we had for our general plan, I think it is unfair to everybody in Loomis. And it is shortchanging the people of Loomis the way the process is. And it looks like the deck is being hacked in the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Sean, is your screen up? Okay.
We have Dottie. Hang on for a sec, Dottie. Dottie, you can go ahead. Just need to unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Dottie Robinson, and I'm at 5501 Mallard Court in Loomis. And one of the concerns and questions I have for the council is, I live at the corner of Brace and Hunter Oaks. It is a very busy corner. And not every auto accident that happens is reported. Is there somewhere or someone who would like to know every time there's an auto accident that isn't reported, so you have accurate statistics of what goes on at these four corners? Thank you.
And we have Miguel. Miguel, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, because I've been trying to get in to see my accountant to do the taxes, and he's booked up. So are you sure that the federal deadline has been extended to October? I know the state has, but are you certain, and get this on the record, are you certain that the federal deadline has been extended in Placer County to October?
When I looked it up on the internet just now, what I saw was that it was extended. I would strongly encourage you to do your own research and to contact the IRS to figure out if it was extended or not, because I don't want to give somebody tax advice. So I would say that you need to check for yourself, because the town doesn't process tax returns.
I think the B had an article today of it, is what I heard.
And Jenny said that the B had an article today about it.
Any more, Sean?
I think that that's it.
Ma'am, I saw you raise your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Deborah Grinder. I live over here at 3866 South Holly Street. And I have something I want to bring to you. It's in the form of questions, because I don't know if that's how I get something talked about or not. But I have some questions that concern me. In light of the East Palestine rail disaster is what I wanted to talk about. Do we know if dangerous chemicals are being transported through our town? Do we have rights to prevent certain extreme toxic products from traveling through our town? And how can we find out, or who can we contact regarding this matter? And do we all realize that the gas transmission line running the length of Pacific and Taylor is the largest-sized line used by the gas company to deliver natural gas? Consider the close proximity of the Taylor-Pacific Highway to the railway tracks. This could spell disaster for our community if we had a similar circumstance as East Palestine, Ohio did. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sean, in your travels, have you ever had an opportunity to meet with the, I'm just going to throw this out, safety officer for Union Pacific? I'm not even sure if that's a title that they have, but just to let you know what the context I'm getting to.
I haven't, but we have had contact with UPE on a number of different occasions for different staff. Merrill has been in contact with them. I've talked to them a couple of different times. Merrill has been in contact with them. I've talked to them a couple of different times. The entity that would have the most contact about that kind of stuff would be the Sheriff's Department. But UPE isn't going to say, hey, tomorrow at 4:30, we're going to have a big thing of gas come through. Because it's a safety issue. It's a, you know, potential terrorist thing and all that stuff. So I would not be surprised at all if we do have some sort of chemicals traveling by. If you look at just the containers on the rail cars that go by. But we don't get like a manifest of what is traveling through town or anything like that. But yeah, I mean, I'm sure that there's things that are going by on the rails.
I've always thought about that.
Yeah.
Well, luckily, we have a resource in the Office of Emergency Services. So we can probably get some more information about that at another time.
Can I ask a quick question about that?
Good.
So Loomis is not large enough to even make any demands to UPE anyway. So even if we said we don't want this happening, they'd be like, too bad, we're doing it anyway. Would Secog have enough pull? I mean, if we went through them or like who would have, like if we didn't want
You know, honestly, yeah, honestly, I don't know the answer to that. UPE, most railroads stand by the kind of viewpoint that they were here before the state was. And they were certainly here before Loomis was. And so UPE has an outsized influence on what they do along their rail line. So I don't know who we would talk. I mean, we could certainly reach out to UPE and ask them if you wanted to direct Merrill to do that.
We've had work on UPE property, for example, that I researched. And I'm not sure we have the authority to encumber with an encroaching permit because they're under the Commerce Department and they operate kind of on their own. So and it's a big organization. So like the monument sign that we're working with them to try and lease that spot. Taylor and Sierra College is a completely different person than rail safety.
All right.
Sean.
Just so, six, eight years ago, we actually addressed this. You can probably find it by searching in our minutes back then, when they started transmitting that different kind of petroleum through town. We actually, I think UPE was actually here. It's been discussed. I'm not going to say what the decision was because I can't remember, but they do it. So we probably didn't have any control. But if you go back and look, that may actually have who we could contact and get more information for the current council firm. Merrill?
The second half of the question was PG&E. And I know if you remember about a year and a half ago, PG&E came through town with a major gas line retrofit project.
Right.
Where they've gone through and they've created bends in their alignment. They have this thing called a PIG that they can run through their pipelines that has all this diagnostic information.
Like the camera.
Measures thickness of the pipes, stress points. I mean, they've gone through and they've done what they can to make that line as safe as possible now.
Okay.
So.
Our esteemed town attorney is chomping at the bit to speak as well.
Oh, by all means.
I just happened to occasion to look up some of the rules on federal rail. And the answer is, you can ask. The federal law preempts local regulation, local and state regulation, almost exclusively in regards to shipping and the use of rail line to actually transport materials. So it doesn't really matter how big the organization is or what organization it is that asks. UPE will provide whatever information it's comfortable providing. But we have no ability to regulate what is shipped through Loomis, unfortunately.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. No further comment?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Then we'll move to opportunity to comment on the consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine in nature and be enacted by one motion unless an audience member or a council member. Otherwise, in which case, an item will be removed for separate consideration. Anything on Zoom? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
I get motion. Your second?
Okay.
I'm confirming that was Amanda that did the first?
Correct.
Thank you.
And Stephanie seconded.
Okay, um, Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Youngland?
Councilmember Nickley?
Yes.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Cartwright?
Aye.
All right, now we'll move to item 13. It's the presentation, pavement conditions and needs presentation recommendation. We have Merrill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Hold on. So while Sean's doing that, before I start, I have some engineering humor. So we all know that the chicken got across the road, right? But the bicycle did not. Why is that? It was too tired. So, yeah, but I'm too tired. So it's all downhill from here. So with that, I'll start my presentation. Go ahead, Sean. So pavement management. Most people understand pavement management to be essentially a database, right? Where you put in all the information from your street network into a database. You tell it how much money you have to spend. And then there's some selection criteria that happens in this black box. And it tells you, okay, here's the streets that you need to work on. And then here's the resulting effect that it will have on your network score. Next slide. There's really only a few treatments that you have to play with. There's seal treatments where you can crack seal or put down slurry seals, which is a real surface level thin application of oil. Next slide. You can do chip and cape seals. A cape seal is simply where you put a slurry seal on top of a chip seal. But the chip seal adds a little bit more thickness to the street. Lasts a little longer, a little bit more of a wear course. Next slide. And you can get to your asphalt overlays. And these can either be where you're milling out the existing roadway and you're putting asphalt back. You can vary the thickness of the overlay. Two inches is pretty typical, but you can go higher if you need to. And if the street's really bad and an overlay can't fix it, you have street reconstruction. And that's what you try and avoid because that gets pretty costly. Next slide. So the decision as to which treatment you do is a function of the score. They have what's called a pavement condition index, PCI score from zero to 100. Zero being completely failed, 100 being a brand new paved street. And as you work your way down, the treatments get more and more... Well, they get costly. That's the next slide. But depending on the score that you have, you have a different toolbox in terms of what you can pick from. So next slide. And this shows just kind of some average pricing in it from crack sealing, where you're actually dribbling cracks. The crack seal into the cracks. Fog is an application of oil without sand in it. Chip seals, we talked about, cape seals, all the way down to mill overlays in full depth. So you can see that the cost gets significantly higher the further you go down that list. Next slide. So this slide, it's a little complicated. But the idea here is that your pavement, it stays in good shape for a fair amount of time. I mean, you can get almost half the life of that pavement where it's still in an excellent to good condition. And then once it starts to deteriorate, the water gets through the cracks. It starts getting into the subgrade. That's when your street starts to deteriorate more rapidly. If you can catch it, a dollar spent there, it says, right at the place where that big bag of money is. That's where you're supposed to be fixing your streets. If you can catch it there, a dollar spent then is equivalent to what it's going to take $5 just a little bit further down that graph in terms of time. So it really, if you're doing proper pavement management, you're trying to catch those before you fall down on that deterioration curve. Next slide. And so if you're doing pavement management properly for any one street, this is kind of what it looks like. The orange line is a street as it starts out. And if you didn't do anything, it would turn into that black line. And it would, you know, deteriorate over about 20 to 25 years. And then most people at some point realize, oh, my God, we've got to do something to our street. And then you overlay it and it starts over with another black line. Better is to apply periodic preventative maintenance with seal coats and crack seals. And so you have the series of blue lines where you're doing these cheaper applications more frequently to keep your street in good condition. Next slide. Repair considerations. So if you look at a street, again, these are the choices, slurry seal, overlays, chip seals. There's different things that go into selecting. That street there, for example, you're going to treat differently if it's an arterial, a busier street, than you would if that was a residential street. And so, next slide. The other idea is that, again, it shows the treatments on the far right-hand side. There's breakpoints where a street will deteriorate. And it goes from one category of repair to the next. So if you're dealing with a street that could benefit from a seal coat and you can catch it before it's no longer effective as a seal coat, you're going to save money, right? And then if you miss it, the next category is if you can catch that, you know, at a chip seal level. You know, and if you miss that, then you're trying to catch it as an overlay. So as you work your way down, that's what the shading is showing is that as you get into the bottom range, you're kind of an at-risk situation where you got to do something or now you're into your next level of expense. Next slide.
Just quickly to add to that, if you look at the curve, it drops off quickly once you start getting past the yellow and into the orange, right?
Yes.
So that's important to see, too. So the degradation of the pavement actually happens faster the farther down you go.
Right. Thank you. Okay, so this is a GIS graph of our pavement management. There's a GIS layer component to it. Streets are broken into different categories of importance. So the arterials are shown on this graph as the red streets. The collectors are the purple streets. And the residentials are the yellow streets. And I would juggle this a little bit. I think there's some, this is how I inherited the system. But basically, you try and take care of your busier streets first. They have a little bit more of an importance factor to them. So next slide. As far as Loomis, and everyone keys in on what's our score, right? What's our pavement condition? So our overall town score, if you look at everything, is 58. And if we do nothing, that score is dropping by about two points a year. Over the last probably two to three years, it's stabilized somewhat. The money that we're spending on our street network is holding it at 58. But again, what Sean pointed out, we're at that point on the graph where you let it slip any further and it's going to really start getting expensive. Now, mind you, this is the overall network. There's some that are better, right? But then there's also some that are worse as far as how you program your streets. And the scores are about the same. Your busy streets, your collector and your residentials are all around that 58 score. So next slide. So when you look at the arterials, the color shows the condition. The greens are good, the blues are fair. And then the greens, the yellows and reds are in poor and very poor condition. Next slide. Give you some examples. Sierra College Boulevard, and I'm glad the resolution shows this. You can see cracking a lot of times in the wheel path. That's what they call a beginning of an alligator crack, which is where you have the interconnected cracking. That's a structural failure to the street. The block cracking, the cracks that go across the street and kind of form a block pattern is actually an indication of the pavement just drying out over time, which is encouraging. Because what that suggests is that there's a really good base underneath Sierra College. And so this street could be saved with either an overlay or I'm even looking at possibly a rubber cape seal. Next slide. This is Horseshoe Bar by the Park and Ride. You'll notice the alligator cracking I mentioned, again, it's in the wheel path. And it's starting to get a little bit more interconnected, a little tighter. You'll start seeing some ruts even, right? Depressions in the roadway. That's a section that's failed. And if you're going to fix this street, an overlay wouldn't do it by itself. Now you're going to have some added expense with digouts prior to your overlay in order to fix these failed sections. And so you're getting more expensive. Next slide. Brace Road, and this is near Sierra College, is probably beyond what an overlay could fix in spots. And it's to the point where it may either take a very thick overlay, milling down and replacing the road section with, say, three inches of brand new asphalt. Or it might even become what Webb was years ago where they did a recycling place, full-depth reclamation type treatment where you're rebuilding the subbase and then paving on top of it, but definitely getting more expensive. So next slide. As far as the needs. So I went around, I drove all the streets in town. I've kind of done my own field notes, not just relying on the database and the scores. But I've actually seen all the streets in town. What this shows is all of the arterials and collectors, the worst ones, and kind of what I would think would serve as a treatment and what it would cost to fix them all. About $2.5 million scattered throughout town. Next slide. The residential streets, same thing. You're going to have all different levels of condition. Next slide. This year, we just did a slurry seal project. Spent about $400,000. I picked all of the streets that could benefit in town from a slurry seal, and we've caught them all. And again, that's trying to catch what you can on that pavement graph before they deteriorate. The seal coats are really cost-effective. And so if a residential could benefit from a slurry seal, we got it done this year. And so these are all the streets that were completed this year with our slurry project. Next slide. You start going to the next tier of streets, shown here in red. These were too bad. If I had put a slurry seal on it, the existing cracking on these streets would just go right through that slurry seal. It forms kind of a crust. You'll see some reflective cracking even on the ones that we did come through it. But it's a nice wear course that'll last over time where these streets were too bad. So the next treatment for them is a rubber chip seal. Now, this is what we did on Laird, which is a collector street. So as you leave town and you go on Laird, we did a rubber chip seal with a slurry seal on top, all the way to Wishing Well. And then from Wishing Well to the county limits was a conventional chip seal. So you can kind of see how those two perform over time. The one past Wishing Well wasn't as bad as the section between Horseshoe Bar and Wishing Well. And so the rubber chip seal was done on the worst section as opposed to the upper section. But cape seal, the chip with the slurry on top, is what I would recommend for these streets. The good news, we were successful in getting a grant from Cow Recycle. They are proponents of recycled tires. And so they give a dollar per square yard off if you want to do rubber chip seals. And we have up to $250,000. So 250,000 square yards of potential rubber chip seals that we can apply in town. So this is about half that. I think this is about 150,000, 150,000 square yards of rubber chip seal. So that would give us 150,000 from the grant by taking advantage of that. So next slide. The rubber chip seal candidates. Okay, so again, on a residential street, as long as you don't see potholes, as long as you don't see the ruts, the depressions, a rubber chip seal can actually bridge those cracks. The picture below on the right is kind of an extreme case. But that's, they basically spray out crack sealing that's melted tire and binder out of a truck. They actually heat it up to over 300 degrees and it comes out smoking hot, literally smoking hot. And then they'll spread chips on top of that. And so what you have with the rubber chip seal is this natural rubberized material that's between your street and the chips that'll absorb the cracks, keeps them from reflecting through. And it just, it lasts a lot longer. So the rubber chip seal can save these on a residential street. On an arterial street that sees a lot more traffic, you'll notice that Horseshoe Bar and Brace Road, where the stops are by the strawberry patch, I rubber chip sealed that and it's not holding up because of the churning motions with all the trucks. It's just that constant churning motion, the traffic. It's soft enough that you're starting to see some heaving. So again, on a residential street, it works well. You start getting into the busier streets with the churning motions and maybe not so much. Next slide. There's a couple streets in town, they're residential streets. Again, the priority, right? Arterial, collector, residential. You tend to do your residentials last. But these streets, Bankhead and Delmar, most notably, are so bad in some cases that they need a leveling course, an asphalt, a thin asphalt overlay to level out that street before you could then come through with a rubber chip seal and seal them properly. So they're short of reconstruction. It'd really be a hard stretch to reconstruct a residential street. So you look for ways to continue to... So you look for ways to continue to build it up. There's no real formal edge of roadway with curb gutter sidewalk like other parts of town. And so just building up the thickness of that street with an overlay ahead of a rubber chip is probably the treatment there. But again, that's much more expensive. The rubber chip seal grant gives us two years to complete. So my plan was to try and do the low-lying fruit this year, get the ones that we can out of the way that are ready to go with minimal or no prep work. We can do some overlay work in conjunction with overlay projects because you're dealing with a paving contractor as opposed to a chip seal contractor. Prep these and then possibly look to do those in future years. So, that's why I say this is a good rubber chip candidate after prep work is because just by itself it wouldn't hold up. So, next slide. As far as work that we've done, and this, I summarized mostly to show that it's not just streets that the transportation money goes towards. Overlay on Boynton, yeah, that was, but there's concrete repairs that we did all throughout town, for example, that are coming from the transportation funds. The town is responsible for sidewalks and so we've done a survey and we should have gotten all of the sidewalks that have tripping hazards or displacements in town taken care of with this year's project. We're fixing the drainage problem there at the corner of Horseshoe Bar and Taylor. It's not street resurfacing per se, but again, it comes out of the street budget because it's all within the right-of-way. We did a pothole repair project. Most of that went towards Sierra College. There were sections that were really bad. And again, those are ones that if you're maintaining your streets, you shouldn't have to do pothole repairs, but we did. It's just a busy street. Dave has a lot of potholes that he's chasing with all the rain that's going on right now. I asked him to give me his list. I think it's probably worth putting another pothole repair project out this year. Again, just to tread water on some of the streets before you have a chance to steal them. And then again, I mentioned the chip and cape seals we did on Laird. So, next slide. As far as future work goes, so Sierra College widening, I think that's about a million and a half. That's in the works. There's a Signal Interconnect, which is a federal grant that's going to pay for a portion of the work that we're going to connect Switzer and Taylor King right across the tracks there. So those two will start talking to each other and that'll help a lot of the backlog that the school sees in the morning. That's going to also go back down to Horseshoe Bar and then it'll go to a new signal at the hardware store at Taylor and Webb. So that's, again, not resurfacing per se, but that is future street work that we're doing. The CalRecycle grant, again, it takes about 15% of the cost off. We talked about that, the rubber cape seal for all the residential streets. A pothole repair project I'd like to get out this year. Brace Road that I mentioned, the one that's really bad, we actually have some federal money that's coming. We put that in as our candidate street. It's two years from now. There's a chance that maybe we can ask for advanced funds and CalTrans actually has a procedure where you can do the work under an IOU. And so it may be that the money comes in two years. We can do the work now and then they would pay us back in two years' time. And so that would be my strategy for Brace is to get the design done and after cost goes out of the way, we'll be right in behind them and fix that road. So, and then again, a handful of arterials and collector overlays to the extent that budget can allow. We have SB1 funds that we've programmed out over five, six years that we just continue to enable at the list of arterials and collectors. So, next slide. As far as funding for street resurfacing goes, we get about a half a million dollars a year. And it's, the SB1 has 135, the highway user gas tax, 185, TDA funds, 350. And that money is eligible to pay for our street department salaries and so it does. So a portion of that, roughly 200,000, goes to employee salaries and that leaves about a half a million each year for funding. So, next slide. The good news, and I wanted to end kind of in the good news, is that we have, as a policy, as Rogers explained in the past, when there's a surplus at the end of the year, operation surplus, that the policy has been to put that in a Public Works General Capital Reserve. And when I put together the CIP budget, this is the adopted budget, the table right out of that from last year, there was about $2 million of general capital surplus reserves that the council appropriated. Now, that's not tied to any one project. This is separate from the various projects that we funded individually. So that's in a fund balance, if you will, that's available for programming. The good news in that 3.1 is just, I guess revenues have been good, sales tax. But that, if you look at Rogers' latest report, there's now 3.1 million in Public Works General Capital Reserve. So there's money to undertake a fairly aggressive repair and rehabilitation to our street network. It's just understanding why and what we're trying to do and giving you the big picture. So, next slide. Any questions?
So how, thank you for your presentation.
Yeah.
How often do you do surveys? Is it like an ongoing thing? Do the street surveys?
Yeah, so the pavement management program software requires a survey every two years for the arterials and collectors, every five years for residentials.
So it's not that often?
It's not that often, but it's, the town is small enough that you could drive it in a day. So I have like my back a napkin, not that bad, but I have my marked-up map that I keep in my office. And as we go from planning level to actual project level, I go out and I look at them again. I start looking at what's the prep work. I make sure that they are indeed publicly maintained streets. Some of these are within maintenance districts, which pay us back, you know, through the funds that are collected that way. And then the limits, there's a lot of private streets in town and so just making sure that we're not spending money on a private street.
And I think that before you went to set up for a grant, you would have to go do a survey again.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I use the database because they'll have pavement condition scores and you can sort by the type of street. And then I kind of reality check that. If we don't use it all, we give it back. I think 250, you'd have to start getting into, and it may be worth doing. Some of the collectors, like Laird, you know, maybe we start rubber chipping Sierra College, maybe Horseshoe Bar with some digout, pothole repair first. Those treatments would probably be, hold up just as much as an overlay, right, on a less busy street. The rubber chip, it's nice because it's a third to half the cost of an overlay. So if you can, if you can get away with that as a treatment, you can stretch your dollars to other streets. So.
And then you said that as a town, we're at 58 on our scale?
Yes.
What you had, what I had heard, maybe this is what you said, that it's kind of not been stable, but relatively stable over the last couple of years?
Yeah.
Does that have to do with the fact that we haven't gotten a lot of rain? It's been really dry and so it's, has it really? Is it, is this current weather making it worse, like a lot worse?
Yes.
Is it going to stay relatively stable?
Yeah, no, there's, so if you didn't do anything, I mean, your network will decrease about two points a year. We're spending some money, but it's not enough to keep it from dropping down. The weather, yeah, water is what kills your streets. And so a lot of these treatments are designed to seal the road with the rubber chip doing the best job, sealing the really badly cracked roads and keeping the water from getting into that, that street and tearing it apart. So, yeah, with the rain, the pumping that you're seeing with all the traffic.
So we're looking at this number going down?
You may lose three or four points this year if we didn't do anything. Yeah.
And then my last question is with the budget, with the 3.1 million dollars, is there, not that I'm proposing that we do this, but I'm assuming we don't want to just use it all at one go. Like we don't want to, we have it all, let's spend it and clean up as much as we can. I feel like we, is there a reason, is there a minimum amount that we want to keep in there all the time or do we?
Well, that...
Depends who you talk to.
Yeah. Roger will say, "Don't spend the money, don't spend the money."
So there was a time when the council wanted to spend it all and just do all the downtown at the same time. But then they saw reason and only spent about half of it. And so that's always my goal, you know? You're sure we've got 3 million. We've got Costco coming, maybe, probably. But I think one of the things as we do the budget this year, I'd like to discuss how we look at what we do with our reserves. So we may, instead of having the blanket policy of dumping it all into public works, we may want to discuss, you know, how we want to, what we want to fund with that. So, thanks for letting me get on my so box. But no, I don't think it's ever wise to spend everything you have. I mean, it took us 40 years to build what we have now and so I'd hate to shoot it all on one. On the other hand, we have constant cash flow coming in on different funding sources. So it's not like we'd have to use the whole 3.1 million.
And we're making money off of that 3.1 million, right?
And it's getting better now that the rates are going up now.
Is there, at what point, and I'm sure we're not close, but at what point do we have enough in reserves that we're making money off of, we're making enough money off of that to fund our actual?
Oh, that'll be, no, that'll never happen.
Hundreds of millions?
Yeah, hundreds of millions, yeah. San Francisco's balance paying our bills.
So there's a slide that had to do with the CIP and the budget, that table that showed the 3.1 million. And I think the appropriate time to answer that question is maybe in review with the CIP. It was a two-year program that was adopted, but my plan was to try and come back to council and give an update in terms of what we've done, maybe what new projects we have in mind. I've sensed, and I saw them back there, Jeff, our sheriff's out there, but we drove by Del Oro and we looked at the drop-off and the pickup congestion. And it may be that there's a right-turn signalization-type project that's in the works for Del Oro. But you look at, okay, so how do we fund that, right? And so the reserves need to compete. These are the projects with the street budget. But why I wanted to bring this up is that if you look at the very bottom there, this shows $14 million of funds and the various funds, that it's not just one fund, right? The general capital fund, there's all these different pots of money that have, they're allocated, they're specific to certain things. So like the drainage fund has to be spent on drainage. Sierra College Boulevard Fund has to be spent on Sierra College Boulevard. The general capital fund is the cleanest fund in the sense that you can spend it on anything. So, yeah, the logic of spinning that down, some of it is what else would you want to spend it on, right? And I think the CIP is the great forum to discuss that. What other ideas do you have? What other projects do you want to see? The Horseshoe Bar, do you want to see that built out like Taylor, right, as a phase two? And what does that cost? Those types of discussions, I think, is where you'd make that call.
Town managers, city managers have a saying where there's infinite problems and finite solutions, right? So we could, if we pave every road in town, spend 5 million, whatever it is, next year, there's going to be another problem that we have to fix and that we don't have the money to fix it. And so Merrill, as the public works, or as a town engineer, wants to spend stuff. Roger wants to make sure that we have adequate reserves. I get to play Solomon and split the baby and decide. And so when we, when we bring back, when we bring back your, you know, the budget and we start talking about that, it's always weighing the resources that we have versus the needs that we have and figuring out that balance, right? Because you never want to spend all of it. You need to keep some of it. Roger, like Roger said, it took us 40 years to get where we're at. At the same time, 20 years ago, we didn't have the revenue coming in that we have coming in now. And so balancing that out is going to be the difficult thing. The other thing I'll tell you, another little idiom of managers is it's easy to be a manager when you have no money because all you can do is say no. And when you become the manager that has money, it's more difficult to manage. So I'll leave you with that.
And some of it may be you take care of the stuff that's at risk, right? That slide where you have certain drop-offs. If you took care of all the at-risk stuff, then you buy yourself some time. Things can deteriorate, you know, whether you do it now or four, five years from now. That could be another approach.
All right, any others? Merrill, I have a question. Remember the project on Boynton? It spanned between King and Chisholm Trail. It's roughly, I think it's a quarter mile, might be a little bit longer. That street looked horrible as far as the alligator cracking.
Right.
And especially when you come into the stoplight or stop sign at King, you could see two, sometimes three inches deep indentions where the tire tracks are, right?
Right, right, right.
So I'm not an expert in this, but it appeared to me like that was a candidate for a reconstruction and yet it was an overlay. And so, I'm just wondering, because it appeared that the subgrade or the substrate below was compromised. So can you tell me a little bit more about that?
Yeah, no, absolutely. So Boynton, and it was interesting because I'd never seen alligator cracks that had spalled, which is where the edges start to deteriorate, to the extent that Boynton had. There really weren't any ruts on Boynton, which would suggest that there was a base failure. Everything, the alligator cracks are that top surfaces failed, right, structurally. But below that was solid. And so what was happening is that all of the material adjacent to the alligator cracks was spalling and falling apart. But the street itself had a really solid base. And I came from the Bay Area where everything's built on clay, right? And so you never trust your base. But out here in the mountains, you've got really solid base. It's a sand base or a rocky base. And so same thing on Boynton. There was no base failure. And so that allowed us to just cap it with an overlay and walk away.
That's amazing because those cracks were wide.
Yeah, 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 but it was just spalled.
My next question is, when you look at the two worst streets, when you have Bankhead and Del Mar and they're candidates for an overlay, would it make sense to mill it first to perfect the surface so that your overlay doesn't follow those contours, those imperfections?
Right, yeah. You could, the nice thing about an overlay is you're putting down asphalt, concrete to whatever thickness you want. So you have the ability to bridge and fill in and recreate the profile. Where a seal coat, a slurry seal or a rubber chip seal, it's just being sprayed and rock and it's going to follow the contours of whatever was there before. So you may not need to mill it is the point because if you're overlaying that street, it'll fill in everything as it goes. A lot of contractors will do what's called a leveling course ahead of time. Whereas if you have some really bad pockets or ruts or that type of thing, they'll fill those in first so that when they pave, the paving machine, you know, doesn't have a lot of, when it compacts, if you have a deeper lift, sometimes it'll compact more than a section that isn't and so.
That's what I was getting to.
Yeah, by doing a leveling course and then paving, you have less likelihood that it'll settle in time.
Right. I've seen in new development projects where they do that and, but then as the surface compacts over time, then it ends up having those natural undulations. It had, where it hadn't been perfected from the beginning, maybe not as much, but you have a thicker layer that's then getting, supporting the weight of the vehicles going over as compared to a thinner layer and it's got to squish somewhere sometimes before.
And that's more apparent on your busier arterial streets. On a Del Mar or Bankhead as a residential, you'll never see the traffic volumes enough to cause that to squish down.
Okay. Oh, then last question. I promised my last. For instance, on narrow streets, and there might be some sections on Del Mar, I don't really travel Del Mar that much, but for sure on Bankhead, there are some sections of the street that are fairly narrow. And you have a street sign that'll say bump 15 miles per hour, 15 miles per hour, right there. When you have two trucks that need to pass, they usually pull over to the edge so that their mirrors don't hit each other as they pass. And that street is fairly narrow in some sections. So my question is, when it comes time to do the resurfacing and we're, you know, we're putting the capital for that improvement, is there a way to widen it in those sections so that cars don't have to pull over to the side when they need to pass? And there's probably logistics in bumping those signs back and I don't know if it encroaches on private property or not. These are just some thoughts that I had, but is it, is it something worth looking into?
Yeah. No, on a road like Bankhead, a lot of, like if we were to pave that street and let's say we brought it up an inch, inch and a half, you're going to have an edge of roadway now that's slightly raised from what's beyond that, whether it's an edge of roadway or someone's driveway, right? A lot of times what you'll do is you'll bring in shoulder backing to bridge that height. So like on Boynton, we brought in shoulder backing material and put that against the edge of pavement so that that drop-off between the pavement and the edge of road was eliminated. So that could be a solution, right? It may not be pavement, but you'd have some type of a shoulder material that would allow the cars to possibly widen out as they pass. Depending on right-of-way, you could look for opportunities to pave a little more. But on a residential street, a lot of these, you're just going to maintain what was there before. You may have to do digouts and that's where it gets expensive. Because there is no formal edge, a lot of the edges have crumbled, you know, and so to try and build that back to... what the street was before is expensive. So you're, you are paving out extra width that way.
And that's exactly what's happened.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. So if they're really bad, you will, you'll come in and, and do a dig out, like I showed on Horseshoe Bar, ahead of whatever treatment you're going to do, just, just to restore that, that failed edge.
Okay. And that shoulder buildup, is that with the three-quarter road base? What material?
Yeah, it's usually a, it's a, like a base rock, it's, it's a, you wouldn't use drain rock because it's all the same size, but you'd have, I've tried using base rock before. Sometimes you can use the millings from your, your grindings.
That makes sense, you already have it and it's right there.
Right. Like, like, there's a big drop off on King and Webb that I've noticed, because I come to work that way, that same thing, it'd be nice to just put those millings in that spot just to level that up. So, and then it's a great source of material, you're already using it and you just, you just direct the contractor to, to level it out on the side of the road.
Okay. Any further questions? Thank you, Merrill, that was a great presentation.
Sure, my pleasure.
Got public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Well, let's open it up for public comment. Sean?
JR, you can go ahead, just need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Very good. My name's Joe Ryan, I live at the southernmost end of Bankhead Road that you guys were showing earlier on the slide. Reason why I raised my hand tonight is, some of the folks on the street, we've been doing some historical data on whether or not that street is our side of the street, south of Sierra College, whether or not it's actually a private road. We've been in touch with the town for probably going on six months or so, but we've not had anybody respond to us over the last two months. We're really hoping to get that resolved and, and figure out if it is truly a private road or if it's a, a public road. I was wondering if there's a good person, since we kind of have everybody in attendance, that can either speak on that or maybe set aside some time to meet with either myself or some other folks on the street. Just trying to get that really narrowed in. I mean, I see that you guys kind of put it in the plans to do work on that, but like I said, our, our historical research going back to the 1800s shows that it's a private road. So we just want to make sure that we have that firmed up if possible.
Hey, Joe, this is Sean, that'd be Merrill, and I'm trying to push as much off to Merrill as I can today. So Merrill will be getting ahold of you sometime soon.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yep.
Anything further, Sean?
Yeah. Sonya, go ahead.
Hi, this is Sonia Coupler, I reside at 5630 Tudor Way in Loomis. And my question is, when you have the plans for repaving the roads in the town, at what point do you change out the directional signs and the street signs and those types of signs on the roads? And the reason why I'm asking is because I had asked a couple times about changing out the street sign at Taylor Road and Sean Way. The sign for Sean Way is barely readable. You have to squint real hard to see that it says Sean Way. So I, I'm just kind of curious about that. Is that done when you're repaving the roads? Thank you.
Yeah, so those don't need to wait for resurfacing. Once we know about something, we go out, look at it, and if there's a need to change out a sign or, we can do that ahead of it, so.
Okay.
In fact, I was, one of the things on my to-do list is I want to do an on-call striping and signage project, so that we have someone that we can, we can just call up anytime we have a need for a sign or striping. I have, man, I probably have a dozen places around town that I'd, I'd love to just do some little tweaks, right?
Right.
But the, the striping we use is a hot-applied thermoplastic melted specialty paint. And the signs, even though Dave and his crews can do signs, it's just easier to just contract that out.
Okay.
Free them up for other things.
Weren't you doing a survey of signs at some point?
There's, yeah, we have a budget, an allowance for signs. It's mostly, the stop signs are the critical ones. You do a reflectivity assessment on those, just to make sure the regulatory sign is still visible. But, but, yeah, I, I made a note of it, I'll go look at it, we can, we can swap now.
Okay. Thank you, Merrill.
And we got another, Miguel, go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Miguel Uchuis, 5911, great court. What I'd like the town to consider is maybe changing the priorities. I drive through Sunrise Loomis every day, and they seal coated some of the streets. And the other streets are fine, I mean, yeah, they're, they're getting a few cracks, but they're not going to get really bad in next year or two. But King Road and Horseshoe Bar from Taylor to the freeway are really bad. And those, I believe because of the traffic and everything, those should be put up on a higher schedule than the repairs on Sunrise Loomis. Thanks.
That's all that I have on Zoom.
All right. Not seeing any audience. Council, you have any last comments? All right. We'll move on to our council committee reports. Does anyone have any report to give? David?
So I met with the, so I have yet to meet with Flood Control District, so that's, I have nothing to report with them, but I met with the Air Pollution Control District. They were talking about, they, they talked about replacing air filters schools. And they, they have started to do that, and one of the, their criteria was if the school is near railroad tracks or the freeway. And I was like, all of Loomis schools are that way, why have they not done our schools yet? And so they said, it was, so they sent me back a, was just a, not really a list, but they said that we are on that list, but we're lower, I think it has to do with equity status. And so we, they will get done eventually, just not quite yet. So I wondered about that. So we are getting things done, hopefully we'll get those air filters in, especially before fires start again. Also, I'm on the homelessness task force, and they were talking about changing that from a task force to a full committee appointment. So it would be a permanent thing instead of just a, kind of a, have a, have a end-of-term limits. One of the things they brought up in this last one was there's, they set up a new homeless camp up in Auburn. They homeless tents, they were the personal tents, and they set up all the same tents, and it's more of a fenced area, and it's more of a controlled setting. And I, I would never want to live there, but I, if I was homeless, it looked, it looked great. I mean, it looked like they were really doing a good job trying to, to maintain it. They, it sounds like it's, it's working, they've only, it's only been up now for three, four weeks now, but it looks like, from what I've seen and from what it sounded like they were saying, it's only supposed to be there for six months, but it's, it looks like they, they might have found something that is a keeper, so we'll see.
Okay.
But it was, it was promising because it looked way better than just the random tents spread all over the place.
So just for clarification, these were, were these, all the tents were uniform?
They were all the same tents, it's empty, so.
Okay.
So, yeah, but it sounds great.
How do they verify if they're homeless? How do they verify that they're actually from Auburn or somewhere else?
I, I don't know, they, I'm assuming they, they have done serp, so my, I'm answering this based on only what I think would work.
Yeah.
Is if they, if they are out doing surveys of the people who have, who were living there previously, then they know who is living there previously and they will let them in first. But they have 50 sites, and I think they keep at about 47-ish people there now, but it looks, from what I've seen, it looks pretty good, so.
All right. Well, thank you. Anyone else?
Just real quick on the LAFCO, the local agency formation committee, they did approve an MSR for the city of Lincoln, so that got approved. And they are looking for, that, that's made up of a couple people from county, you know, from jurisdictions, a couple people from the board of supervisors, some public members, there's, and they're looking for a public member and an alternate public member at this time. So if you were interested in being on that, if someone was interested, they should put their application in on that. But other than that, that's...
What is an MSR?
Multiple Service Review.
Okay. Last meeting, I mentioned a plan, a project by the Placer County Transportation Planning Agency. And what I said, I didn't have my notes, but I said that there was going to be an additional lane added to Highway 80 in between where Highway 65 intersects and merges in to Douglas Boulevard and Roseville. And the correct information is that fifth lane will be extended beyond that. It'll actually terminate right around Riverside Avenue. So, and as you know, those feeders cause a lot of backup because people are having to merge into an existing lane where it already has traffic. Well, then now they'd have their own to merge in, so less backing up there. And additionally, there, so that's eastbound, correction, that's westbound 80. Eastbound from where Highway 65 feeds into it to Rockland Road, there's going to be an auxiliary lane. And an auxiliary lane is still a bona fide lane, it's structural, just like a normal driving lane, but it allows the traffic that's feeding into the freeway not to merge in with existing traffic, so that, that backup doesn't happen. And then they pull off, it gives them the opportunity to pull off on the next exit. So there'll be an auxiliary lane, eastbound 80, from 65 to Rockland Road. And then a new fifth lane added from 65 westbound to Riverside, basically where the county, Placer County line ends. So just wanted to clarify that. And with that, David?
Is there a timeline on that?
Now you put me on the spot. The best of my recollection in my last meeting was that they were shooting for mid-2024, but because with projects, and you know how things come up and you always get setbacks, it's probably going to be toward the latter part of, or the end of 2024.